Wow.
In trouble now.
My thirty-one, can you go call this meeting door? I'm gonna call on train that does commit to the new destination church for a prayer and a pledge to leave. Right?
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we just thank you, Lord, for who you are in our lives and in your community. Lord, we just thank you for those that serve Breckenridge. We thank you for allowing us and equipping us to be great stewards of what you've wanted us to do here. Father, I pray for the mayor and the commissioners that you would grant them wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. So as they make decisions, Lord, that it benefits everybody. So, Lord, we just glorify your name while we speak health in peace over everybody here today. Lord, we, uh, we just want to thank you for who you are and what you're going to do in this community in the future. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Right, thank you. You're welcome to stay as long as you like. I have a, a meeting after this.
Thank you very much, sir.
So we'll go to the open floor. Speaker is limited to three minutes. And Jessica?
We do have one person, Jason Castillo.
Yeah. Oh, people? Well, I'm just here really kind of last minute because I, I need some help getting water hooked up to one of my properties. It's three oh eight South McTamus. April twentieth of last year, I came and put deposit down. I did the whole, the whole deal. Um, to get it open. I guess I had a guy or the, whoever the public works guy was here and, uh, I think it was maybe Alvarez when he was here. And, um, they went and put a tap in, found out that there's no water connected to that side. I know they built two houses across the street. Maybe they put water to that place, those two houses, but they didn't run it for some reason across the street. It's right next door to the First Baptist Churches, properties where like they drop clothes off or anyway. But, um, I've been in offices several times. I've left my name and number on probably a whole redwood of trees of, and then we'll get back to you. And I, I can't get an answer. So it's been a year where, uh, over a year, April twentieth of twenty twenty-two is when we did this. But I need water to that property. We're trying to get it finished up and get it, try to get it rented. We got people coming in, um, feature wise, kind of get it. So that's what I'm, and I'm just asking for help, looking for help on how to get that done. But other than that, that's, that's really all I got. Very white south of Camus was that after. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
Special presentation and announcements and our deputy secretary will administer from there.
All right. So on May sixth, we held our general election and both Vince Moore and Gary Mars were both reelected for Commissioner Place Three and Place Four. So, um, I would like to do their administrative, if they'll come up for me. If you can stand here. All right, so you're not going to repeat after me. I state your name.
I'm Vince Moore.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm. That I have not. Directly or indirectly.
Directly.
Paid, offered, or promised to pay.
Paid, offered, or promised to pay.
Contributed or promised to contribute.
Contributed or promised to contribute.
Any money or thing of value.
Any money or thing of value.
Or any public office.
Promised any public office.
Or employment.
Or employment.
For the giving or withholding.
For the giving or withholding.
Of a vote at the election.
Of a vote at the election.
At which I was elected.
At which I was elected.
Or as a reward.
Or as a reward.
To secure my appointment.
Secure my appointment.
Or confirmation.
Or confirmation.
Whichever the case may be.
Whichever the case may be.
So, now we'll do your oath of office. I state your name.
I'm Vince Moore.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute.
Will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of City Commissioner, Place Three.
Of City Commissioner, Place Three.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Your statement of office first. I state your name.
I, Gary Marsen.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I have not.
That I have not.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Paid, offered, or promised to pay.
Paid, offered, or promised to pay.
Contributed or promised to contribute.
Contributed or promised to contribute.
Any money or thing of value.
Any money or thing of value.
Or promised any public office.
Or promised any public office.
Or employment.
Or employment.
For the giving or withholding.
For the giving or withholding.
Of a vote at the election.
Of a vote at the election.
At which I was elected.
At which I was elected.
Or as a reward.
Or as a reward.
To secure my appointment.
To secure my appointment.
Or confirmation.
Or confirmation.
Whichever the case may be.
Whichever the case may be.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Now, would you hear both of us?
Yeah, to take the hat off for this. Now I'm just playing.
I say.
Hi, Gary Marsen.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of City Commissioner, Place Four.
Of City Commissioner, Place Four.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
They have to do.
There you go.
No, we don't find, we'll find you a tech when you go on.
Yeah.
If not, we'll just say afterwards.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Go to fact report. We're turning it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioner. Uh, I just wanted to give you a few quick updates on, um, the downtown revitalization grant um, that we've, um, received and then we were thinking that we did and then we did. And so they're looking, we, we did. But remember, we went ahead and left that. We got notified that we did it, but then they had extra money. So we, we were right on that line. And, um, they have notified us that their estimated start date will be July, first of July. So we'll see if that pans out. Um, and as a reminder, that was the sidewalk improvements at, uh, right up here at Rose and, you know, Fort Howard. And then, um, on the planning grant, um, and we are, the downtown revitalization grant was five hundred thousand. And then on the planning grant, that was fifty-five thousand. And remember that is essentially the last comprehensive development dream of plans, excuse me, comprehensive development plan that was done in Breckenridge was like in nineteen sixty-seven. Um, and so this is a much needed, uh, update to essentially comprehensive development plan. And it includes, um, housing and, um, existing land use maps. Um, that field work has been completed. Uh, they're, they're going to incorporate that survey information and then they'll be able to, um, give us some draft information on that. Um, they are incorporating the community strategic planning meeting that we had. That, uh, he, I don't know if you guys, uh, Ken Conia was there and, uh, I don't know if he introduced himself to y'all or not. But, um, he came and was listening and he took pictures. And so he's going to incorporate that information. Though he is working on drafting subdivision regulations, which, um, we desperately need. And, um, he's also drafting zoning, uh, updated zoning ordinance. Um, and that will include, um, you know, incorporate feedback from the EDC, the BDDC. And, um, you know, in developing the downtown district, looking at, uh, an overlay district for the downtown district. Um, looking at accessory structure, car doors, mobile homes, tiny homes, and RV parks. Um, and just the classification and how we define what those classifications are. So that, um, that also included in that is infrastructure inventory, which we obviously desperately need. And the engineers are working on that portion of it. For fifty-five thousand, it may not go far, but anything we can get to try to help us exist, uh, you know, identify where our existing, uh, infrastructure is in the ground will be helpful. So, um, I wanted to give you an update on those two things. And then I've given you some information and just wanted to remind you guys that, um, there are new regulations coming down from the EPA and the TCEQ, uh, requiring, requiring lead service line to be inventoried and replaced in cities. Um, now, the good news is there's some money that's coming with that. Um, the engineers have gone ahead and put in a pit of project information, um, program form for this program. Um, it's through TWDB, Texas Water Development Board. And fifty-one percent loan forgiveness and forty-nine percent no interest, uh, rate. Now, that might sound great, but when you look at the magnitude of what we think we have, um, and just talking to our public works guys, uh, we think it could be as high as, um, ninety percent of the lines, you know, are, are led. Um, so we're looking at, and you know, it's still evolving and how it's going to pan out will be interesting to see because, you know, we're, this, we're looking at twenty million. Um, and even if, you know, it's only ten million, um, that, and it's no interest, it'll go quite a bit of money. So, um, and we're not the only s- small city that will be struggling with that. So I think there's probably, it's going to evolve as we go and how this actually, uh, comes down the pipe. Um, the first part of it will be, um, inventory. Part of it is, you know, obviously identifying and inventory. So, um, just wanted to let you know that that is ongoing. Any questions on that? The inventory itself and then, and then the inventory and the construction. So depending on, you know, when we find out, you know, what, if we were, were successful in getting awarded, uh, it would need to be completed like by October, um, twenty-fourth, the inventory. And then the construction obviously would happen after that. So, um, any questions on that? Okay. Well, then, um, really the other thing, we've got some events up there, um, we can talk about. The bulk pickup is June fifteenth. Um, again, people can sign up on our website and they can also call us, but they can apply on the website. Um, they have a chance to go see our, our website and it's new and it's, um, I hope you guys have all looked at it. It's really, um, I'm excited about it. There's so much more content on it. It's so much more easily navigable and easy to find things. Um, so we're excited about it. Oh, yeah, so I'm sorry, that was before. Um, so July fourth falls on a, um, Tuesday. So, um, the next meeting, I'm assuming then would be July eleventh, unless you guys want to meet on July fourth.
I'll, I'll be here for them then.
Oh, you won't be here? Okay.
Better for me.
Oh, okay.
Melis, I'll have cake.
Well, I don't have cake. We can have cake. Lots of frosting? Okay. Um, so, um, I mean, yeah, I think that's a normal practice. So we'll, we'll plan on that. Uh, and if there's any major objections on that.
Good.
And then, um, so we've got bulk pickup and then, um, boom fest is going on out at the lake and that's July first. Um, and then July fourth.
All right. You're going to be here July fourth?
Will I be here July fourth?
I will be here at Breckenridge.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. We'll go to items four in our presentation, the executive director, Breckenridge Chamber of Commerce, Yuri Hunithin.
Hello, everyone. Um, so I'm just going to go over the, uh, profit and loss for the city hotel motel tax funds from January to March. Um, and I'll make it fast because it's not so entertaining. Um, so, of course, you all know that we get a, um, we have a contract, of course, with the city that every quarter we receive the hotel motel taxes and those are reserved for tourism and other things that would be inviting for outside community people to come and, and have fun in Breckenridge. And so, um, one of the things that we have on the list is things that we use to, like our coffee machine. We do our flyers, our mail out and just different things like that and brochures that we keep there in our office for when people come in town. Um, one of the things that I've noticed since I've been there, a lot of people do come for minerals. And so we are the mineral capital. So we will keep that going. But we do have a, a brochure that we like to give out. So those are the things that we, we often see come in, in our office. Um, and then there was, of course, frontier days. A lot of that, both of the finances will be in the next quarterly report. But this one, um, we had some, like advertisement that we did with K R B C. We did a commercial. We did, uh, the geofence that will allow other people, whenever they drive downtown, they'll, they'll get something, an alert on their phone. So, um, that was a chunk of money that we used for that. And then we had, uh, a deposit for some of the things that we used for print or like the petting zoo for frontier days, things like that. Um, and again, we have other things that we utilize, uh, just boring things, you know, UPS and stuff like that, things we have to order. Um, and then sponsorships and vendors and chuck wagons, a lot of that stuff, uh, the postage, everything that we use for that. Um, you know, we, we have to make perfectly well. Um, and so, and that sums up that quarterly report as far as the financials go. Um, I don't know if there's any. Can you guys have?
Thank you. Thank you for your work. You're, I stopped by a couple of weeks ago. Boy, she was just busy. We appreciate everything you do.
Thank you. Um, Mayor, can I go, you know, mention one thing I meant to. Um, so we've got that slide up there. I just wanted to point out, um, and probably because we're going to talk about a little bit later when we talk about the strategic plan. But, um, on the sales tax history, um, you'll, you'll notice, I mean, we've been doing pretty good on the receipts of sales tax and growing for the last couple of years. Um, but unfortunately, this, this latest month receipts were down, um, from what we estimated that they were going to be. So, um, you know, I will say every month I'm, I'm waiting and I'm looking at that report to see, can we at least get what we were budgeting? Um, but I wanted to point that out, um, and we'll, I'll talk about it a little bit more.
Okay, all right. All right, we'll go to our, excuse me, consent agenda. I'll ask the commission, please review agenda items, make motion after review unless you would like to take an item up for individual consideration. If you all look at five through seven and we get ready, we'll have somebody make motion on those three ones.
A move to approve consent agenda items five through seven is presented.
Second, motion second, all in favor? None opposed? Thank you. Public hearing items. We're going to open this public hearing at five fifty PM. This is a time for public comment. There is no discussion during public hearing. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Uh, Adam, this is public hearing regarding whether the buildings on the following properties are dangerous buildings pursuant chapter five, article one of the Breckenridge Code of Ordinance.
So what we'll want to do is go through one at a time and you've got the mark on there. So if there's, um, for example, the new speakers here for one fifteen South Parks.
Is anyone here to speak? One fifteen South Park. Okay. Nine oh seven North Shelton. Anyone here for that address? Yes, sir?
If you'll come up and state your name and, um, add us for the record, please.
Tim, Tim Pickler. Owner of the property. And nine oh seven North Shelton. I live at one thousand eight West Elliot in Breckenridge. I would like to know what they determine to be the whole standard of the code for the, its use restored and have been stored several years. It's been that way for a long time and they've never argued it before. And all of a sudden they've got in throw the tenant, all this stuff on the list. It's just a store room. It shouldn't have the same standard as the rental unit, so.
There's no discussion on this. You're right. Thank you. All right. Five thirteen South Stoker. Does anyone here for that particular property? None? Nine oh nine North Breckenridge Avenue? None? One ten West Third?
Yes, sir. I didn't bring in the packets, but, uh, there's a couple of, probably a share. My name is, uh, Swed Duran. And, um, I got the notice about this property being, um, unfit. And so I do agree with that. I tried to get a permit on March twentieth. I was denied because of one of the regulations I have. You can't invest more than half the value of the property. Uh, so what I've done is I've got an, uh, elevation certificate and it is three inches below the flood plain. Right now, that flood plain is based on the nineteen eighty-one flood. We've had one in two thousand six, two thousand sixteen, and twenty twenty-one, and none of them have been quite that magnitude. We've had improvements almost every few years to the creeps and to the overflows. And it seems like every time it gets better. So I'm hoping that you'll allow a variance, uh, for to let me refurbish this property completely so that, um, it won't just be a vacant lot, you know, for, for a few decades or, or forever. Um, what I have here is the, the picture of the twenty sixteen flood and you can see where I've pickled there that property. You can kind of see where the water, you know, you can see the yard where the water has not reached the house or, or the floor. I've looked through the UNICODE. And, um, it's, it said that you can allow a variance. Um, I'm looking at section five, eighty-three, eighty-four, and eighty-five. And on eighty-four, um, it shows that variances may be issued from the construction or potential improvement system would be to be erected on lots of one half acres or less if it's surrounded by lots that exist in structures that are constructed below the flood place, the base flood level. So it, it, it has to consider some of the other factors like that it's not going to pose a, a danger to somebody else, that it's not going to create more, uh, a higher elevation for somebody else. And I'm not planning on doing anything other than refurbishing the structure that's there on the inside. So, um, so let us up that. There is a certain elevation certificate on the back. There's a scope of work, uh, the cost, estimated cost. And I think that the, I don't know, this house after it's done should be around sixty-five thousand. And based on what I've come up with, I'm at less than half of that. So I'm hoping you'll go by that value and not by what it is now, which is only two thousand dollars. So I have every intention of bringing it up to code if you'll let me. And, um, I think that, you know, based on the last four years of floods, it's a really low risk. It's a really low risk to, to have damage. Uh, I can attest to one, I can attest to the three floods that I saw did not reach the bottom floor. And of course, I wasn't around in nineteen eighty-one and I heard the story of how bad it was and they were going to eat around on boats, you know, for a week. So I, I can assume that that one part of it.
One oh nine and West Seven. Anyone here to speak on that? All right, sir?
Uh, Johnny Graves, I wish, I wish to surrender that property to Breckenridge. Well, I got that.
Thirty oh three West First. Anyone to speak on that? Yes, sir?
Uh, I received, uh, uh, the letter to, uh, this building and I need only, I need this, uh, permit to rebuild. Because I don't have enough time and, you know, I'm a driver and I.
I'm sorry, General. Can you state your name, please?
Jose Palacios. And I want to hear it because I need you to burn the building by. And then I'll bounce. Thanks. Um, thank you. I always thought it was a kid. The builder.
That all, sir? Thank you. Go to action items number nine. Discussion.
Uh, we really need close public.
Yeah.
We need close public hearing.
I'm sorry. I forgot. Five fifty-six PM. Action hours nine, discussion and any necessary action regarding whether the buildings on the seven properties are dangerous buildings pursuant to chapter five, article one of the Breckenridge Code of Ordinance. And if so, discussion and if any necessary action to regarding issue orders to abate the dangerous buildings or to accept conveyance of, of property from owners. Discussing, discuss these items one at a time and take action or leave child immediately following each discussion. Staff recommended action listed below. We'll start with one fifteen South Parks. All right. With the move to declare one fifteen South Parks a dangerous building in order that the owner demolish the building within thirty, thirty days. All right, motion.
Are you making it a motion?
Before you do, Rob, if you don't mind, um, in front of you, you have a little packet that looks like this. This is the order that would come out if that's what I'll decide to be. Hi, my name is this attorney. It's me. Um, and so the first, they're in order that they're on the agenda. So I just wanted to make you all aware of this is what, um, would end up being the order resulting, if that's the decision you wanted to make. And the, the list that is in the center of that first page goes all of the violation of the minimum standards. I just want to make sure you guys know that this, all of these are in violation and you wanted to declare it dangerous with the language that is in your packet.
So if you, if you're looking at that list, I mean, so if we go back to, um, you know, there was no one here for one fifteen South Park.
No, he just started reading. I was asking if that, if he was making, if that was his motion or if he.
Oh, okay.
Really, but no. Okay. I move with declare one fifteen South Parks a dangerous building in order that the owner demolish the building in thirty days.
Second, motion is second, all in favor? I oppose. Thank you. Nine oh seven North Shelton.
So this, um, and I don't know, first you're Malcolm, uh, you want to speak in a minute, but this is the gentleman, you know, he was asking why it was, um, substandard. So it is listed on in the back. So it is listed on in the background information, an actual even on the order to abate, um, that you, she was just referencing.
Well, actually this one, we don't have an order. Um, this was one that staff had reported that it might be a voluntary conveyance.
Okay.
So I don't have that, but we can definitely prepare that. Um, and then it's listed in your packet with all of the violations, which I can, um, read to you real quick.
Yeah, they're right.
It's, um, roof, ceiling, floors, walls, et cetera, rotted or decayed and falling apart. Unhappable due to obsolescence and/or deterioration caused by neglect, vandalism, fire damage, old nature, elements. Um, unsanitary and/or damp condition, the presence of, because of the presence of insects, rodents, or vermin. Um, contains holes, cracks, or other defects and does not have railings for stair steps, balconies, horses, and elsewhere. Um, does not have operating supply lines for electrical service. And then constitutes a danger to the public even though secured from entry. So those are the violations of minimum standards for that property.
It has a metal roof that does not leak at all. I do not have a water leak in that car. And the electrical service was replaced about two years ago, so there's a new service there. And I've put in new floors in three of the front room. Just a work in progress.
Is there a plan for people to, someone to move to live in that?
I, I asked, I told him it was going to be for storage and he said that was fine for the time being and he, now all of a sudden he wants it livable. I was told it was for storage, it was fine. I thought we use it for storage and back for.
Who, who, when were you told that? About him?
Malcolm.
About Malcolm?
What year was that? Yeah. Your paper said November twenty-second, oh. And I told you could use it for storage? I said I was leaving it for storage and you said that'll be all right for now. Which I expect to be future action, but like I said, it's storage of storage, I mean.
Never, I never knew you came in after the initial letter. I didn't know you contacted.
Right, I talked to him, boy, he sounded at that time.
All I know is when I talked to him about another location, he said we need to do our job. It, that you'd sold it, but it wasn't changed in the, in the system yet. We didn't know about it.
I've got two other properties, yes, I gave the city, they're still in my name. Paper never gets finished.
Well, it's not, I mean, it, it is a, a residence. So whether or not the use of it at your building or somebody living there is really not the issue. It's, is it, it's a, it's not an accessory structure, it's a residence, so, um.
But it's not a danger.
Well, I mean, according to our ordinances and all of these things, all of these things have to be addressed or to not be.
For storage, it doesn't have to have worked utilities. Is what I was told.
Well. Okay, um.
But it is wide open, people can go in and out, other kids or whatever, I mean, rats, it's more than else.
I think we're at this option anymore.
Right.
I mean, I think our, our ordinance says it's intended for.
Well.
I think this was substandard back when I was still here back in twenty thirteen, back then. And he might have been told at that time it could be used right at that time.
And, and somebody, and, and I don't know, I mean, somebody may have said that, but it, you know, it's really what is written in or an ordinance that, that matters. So if it's, if it's a residence and, and it is a residence, it's not, I mean, whether or not you're just using it for storage, that's, I mean, that's, that's not really germane to our ordinance. I mean, it's a residence, it's a house and, and needs to be brought up standard. Uh, whether or not somebody's living in there, if somebody, if a kid got in there, what would happen? I mean, it's that, so it's, it's not just somebody inside, it's somebody from the outside going in.
And I pulled up the ordinance, um, and the building lists, the, the definition of building in section five dash three lists basically any type of structure, including, um, accessory structures like sheds. Um, and this is the minimum standard supply, um, for continued use and occupancy of a building. So it doesn't necessarily distinguish between residential occupancy and the ordinance.
Can we give a timeline on this stuff? I mean, can we say, hey, you got a year?
Well, do you want it standing there for a year?
I'm just asking.
You, you can give a timeframe and, but I mean, it needs to be a realistic timeframe for, you know, to bring it up to standard so that it's not a danger to.
My question, but you stay and have to be livable.
It's, yeah, yes, it's gotta be brought up to standard. Whether it's, somebody's living in there or not.
Right. Are you willing to bring it up to spend that much money to get it where it needs to be?
I'm halfway there already, so it would be finishing.
It doesn't look like it. I'm just going by what I'm saying.
I'm going to fix the outside last, I ain't never going to fix the outside first if people just tear it up, we gotta fix the outside. Like I said, I've worked on the inside several times, I just haven't.
Is there anything in it right now of value?
It's storage. I've got a lot of construction materials in here in Southport.
But someone's leasing it currently?
No, it's mine. I don't know.
I understand that, but you had mentioned, of course, someone was leasing it and they were going to start, they want it to be livable now instead of just for storage?
How long have you owned the building?
Probably twenty years.
Twenty years now, twenty years down the road and people, you know, I, I, I say we have to go by the city ordinance.
And in terms of the timeframe, our ordinance says that we shall allow thirty days unless it's determined from the evidence presented at the public hearing that additional time is required. If more than thirty days is allowed, specific time schedules shall be established for the commencement and performance of the work. And then more than ninety days, if we get more than ninety days, you require a bond, more specific schedules and things like that. And that's what state law and our ordinance says.
Thirty to ninety days. They said that thirty, you can see.
Right, I mean, no more than ninety.
Right.
So, I mean, there is a similar one in there, I think it's the last thirteen oh three. So you, um, you could, I mean, you could allow ninety days and then in the same, you know, um, motion, you would say if it's not done with in ninety days, then you would go ahead and order the demolition and, you know, come back to.
Oh, can you, can you get it done in ninety days or is that not possible? I mean, I don't want to waste your time or my.
I had a heart attack three years ago and I am fully disabled. My son is in the field and I get some work, help from him, but it would be certainly do my best.
Ninety days?
No.
And then if it's not done in ninety days, it would be, or to be demolished?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So that if you look at, um, number seven or.
It's in that little, that little thing I sent you or I gave you on your desk, it's thirteen oh three, it's a one that has a staple. Thirteen oh three West First. And then it's the second page of that. Um. Oh, I'm sorry. So on, on, on your motions, the record and the motions where it says that you're trying to free with, there's two options there. Um, if you want to do the repair, you can use that same, you could use that same address to allow the ninety days and then the.
So, okay. So Jim, when was the last time someone was in this house? It's, it's someone lived in this house? Or has it been used for storage for ten years now?
Um. Uh, the Alexanders were their last, I believe they left in wait.
Okay, so, so after they left, there's been no.
It's been stored.
It's been, basically been stored.
Right.
Okay, cause and I'm, I'm just going by what I see, so, um, I don't want to, uh, I'm kind of, no. Um, I'm just going by what I see. And so, I mean, to me, it looks like, is it, is that tree growing through or is it just kind of wrapped?
It's next to the porch.
I mean, have you heard anything from anybody else that's been around it or anything, or does it surround any other neighbors or anything?
There's not really any neighbors up there. You tore down the two behind it and the one across the street, so, okay, it's kind of by itself now.
I mean, the thing, the thing about it is that, I mean, I don't want to be, I, I, I'm not trying to say that we want to be the people that come out and just, we're just going to tear it down, but there's, there's some sort of progress that has to be made. I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna do the ninety days, there's got to be some sort of progress or we're, we're back to square one.
Right.
And, I mean, we, we definitely want to give you the opportunity, that's, I mean, that's the thing about it. But, I mean, if it's been like that for ten years, uh, or, or since then, I guess, oh eight, so I guess that would be fifteen. Uh, according to my B H S man. It's been fifteen, what's it going to be in the next fifteen? Is it going to be the same way or is it going to be an opportunity to, to put something to, uh, the, the better that in the town, you know? That's, that's the thing about it is that, is, is seeing some sort of progress. I mean, is that, is ninety days, is that something that you could?
Yes.
We could accomplish?
Yep.
I mean, we'll, we, we want to be in your corner, but at the same time, you know, we're, we've got.
Right.
Ordinances that we've got to go by. And, and we want to give you that opportunity, just like we, we want to do the, the other people that are here tonight. So, uh, I mean, if, if we can, if we can see it, I mean, we'll check with Malcolm, whatever we need to do to make sure that we have, have the ball rolling. I mean, I, I definitely like to see it.
Uh, will they issue a permit? The one now, will they issue a permit?
Yes, but it's not the same in six months.
Right.
You won't have the six months like when, when we give a permit to someone else.
You'll have that order to proceed to sign on the building permit.
Okay.
I move to declare the building located in nine oh seven North Shelton a dangerous building in order that the building be repaired within ninety days. If the building is not repaired within ninety days, order that the building shall be demolished.
Second.
All right, motion is second all in favor. 513 South Stoker.
I move to declare 513 South Stoker a dangerous building in order that the owner demolish the building within thirty days.
Motion is second all in favor. Nine nineteen North Breckenridge Avenue. The picture on this one is not a real good picture, but this one's probably the most dangerous structures right there on the highway. You see it from the front, the wall of the rocks is bulging outside like it's ready to come down.
You know, I did talk to the owner today and he, he talked about wanting to convey it to the city, so I'm not good, that's something one. He's not here.
I move to accept voluntary conveyance of the property located at nine north, nine, nine, nine nineteen North Breckenridge Avenue. From the property owner and authorize the city manager to execute a release and conveyance agreement.
Second, motion is second all in favor. 110 West Third.
So on this one, this is in the floodway. Um, and I mean, you, you heard. I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry. Um, but you, so you heard what it said, um, but some of that is out of your control. I mean, when the state mandates, um, you know, the zone, the flood zone, um, I mean, that's whether or not an actual flood has occurred in a certain timeframe. I mean, they're, they're assessing what that is, um, but it doesn't, you know, even if it doesn't, even if it had flooded in a hundred years, um, I mean, there, that's something that they've defined within the law, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So not up to discretion if it actually occurred or not in one or two or five years. Um, and then I guess I would just ask the attorney to speak to, um, the projected value. I mean, I know that you want to, but the value on a projected value, I mean, you can't project what a value may be. We have to go on what the value is on the books today. I'm pulling that up. And other than that, I mean, is there any, I mean, this is, you know, state federal law and of course our ordinance as well, because we comply with those. But I don't know if there's, um, any will there at all.
So you're saying that we, we can't allow anything?
Just because in a flood zone, then we can't rebuild them, right? I mean, that's.
Well.
What that means?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's female, female of the federal and it, in the floodway or the flood plain is substantial improvements over fifty percent. You cannot do over fifty percent of the current value of the structure. And that's not a local ordinance that we can give a variance to, that's a federal thing. If we do that, one of the things which in the ordinance that we have to look at is the sus- susceptibility and the propo- of the proposed, proposed facility and its contents, flood damage and the effect of such damage on the individual owner. So if there's, can't give variance, if there's any damage possibly to him or other people. It also, even if there is a variance, um, there's a whole list of things that he would have to do.
He'd have to raise the, the base floor level for the flood, floods. First can't be done.
It has to be anchored and no flotation and no, even if you got the variance, it's not like you can just build it back like it is. There's a whole list of things that has to meet, even if we were able to give a variance to do it.
Okay, you know the law. Yes, so the trigger is if the value of the proposed work equals or exceeds fifty percent of the market value of the building before the damage has occurred or the improvement is started. Then that would be a substantial improvement or repair, which would bring it within the, the rules that this gentleman has addressed. Sure, pretty much impossible.
Yeah, and our hand is just, it's federal stuff, so our hands are pretty much tied.
Move to go.
What accent, for what? Can, can I speak? Just, I, I have a house right next door to that. Like, so, you know, I mean, like I got. When you say that, I'm like. Cause I, and I know everybody on Facebook thinks it's a scam, but I already, I have a house there for rent. But, so if, if that, in my case too, if I, if I had started out with a property like that, um, and what you guys are saying is like, if he, if the value of the house is three thousand dollars, he can't spend more than fifteen hundred dollars to repair that. That is kind of, but, okay, so, I mean, if we want to play, we want to do that, what if you had used materials? What if you got a window for five bucks and, and dried, dried it out? Because to be honest, that house is probably better than sixty percent of the houses in that area.
It's sound.
And then, yeah, and if you got a, you have a man here who's trying to fix it and put it back on the tax roll. I know, I know there's a state ordinance or whatever, but.
The value of the house is the thing. To pay for rockwork like that, there is actually more than a two thousand dollar value in that and.
Current price of that rockwork is about sixty thousand dollars. Yeah, probably, we're bound by the federal law, the law says.
And also I have something to say, uh, they said they're improving the creek, so they're painting all, um, they're doing improvements.
She's saying is the flood plain's probably outdated. Right, but we're still stuck by the federally, it's all federally. Right, but we're still stuck by the federally, it's all federally and they said it and they do the math.
The, the federal government didn't. Give you the value for that house.
Who value, who appraised the house?
That's pretty.
Central appraisal.
I mean, and, and those are pretty subjective numbers.
That's what I'm saying. You should ask them to reappraise it, then your taxes are gonna go way off.
Well, yeah, but you want them up anyway, if you're gonna. You're gonna add value to the house, especially if you, if you're gonna have a loan out and you want at least the house of. Value of the house to be something besides three thousand dollars.
The thing is, it is federal law and it is based on what the value is on the books today, which is a cradle of it, right? Um. I mean, you know, a, a few city stands are tied in this, and I hear what you're saying, I mean, I look at it, I'm like, oh my gosh.
Yes, and the wind on the door, you would think.
But, you know, this is, and, you know, e- even so, and it's gonna be hard to raise that out of the floodplain. One of the stipulations, raised it out of the floodplain, um, but that's. That costs a lot of money to raise that up out of.
Yeah, no, you couldn't raise, i- it's just that. So every, it, just because it's in that shape, it has to be raised. What?
No, because it's.
Okay, so my house is in the floodzone.
It's in the floodzone.
And there's several houses, people living in those houses, they're in the floodzone, we know if they're above flood level?
But they're probably in the floodzone too.
So what happens?
Whenever they need to do some remodeling stuff, they won't, they won't be able to get a permit.
Are, well, and the other thing you have to think about is, are they, you say there's other people in the. Most insure, your insurance is gonna be a lot higher.
Correct.
If you're in a flood zone, your insurance is gonna be a lot higher.
Yeah.
So, probably the people that are there, their insurance is pretty high.
No, but there's several, there's people.
If they've got insurance.
Yeah.
There might be someone that don't even have insurance.
But you can get insurance, you just don't get flood insurance, you're not covered if there's flood, but you get, if your house burnt down, you still get the, the value of the house.
Some, but you know, some of those, you can raise it, raise the elevation, but like we said, this, this one can't. I mean, it could.
I mean, he could, if he could raise it, he could, he'd be allowed that. I just don't think there's a way to raise that house.
And if there was a title policy that was, was purchased when the property was purchased, then it would have been disclosed all over. On the title policy that this was gonna be an issue of the property.
I don't like it. I mean, you have. You have someone that, I mean. He handed this to us, I mean, it's, it's not, I mean, it's research, I mean, there's a plan. I mean. I mean. I've known Josh. For a while and he's a business owner, he's invested in this community that he's living in. And we're bound by. Federal laws that those folks don't even know Breckenridge, Texas exists. And. And he wants to improve. And we're. Our hands are tied because we can't. I mean. I, I don't, I don't like that. I mean. And get, I like speeding ball. Region that's seventy-five, I'm going eighty and I'mma hope you don't catch me. So. Yeah, but. I don't wanna know, I mean. Malcolm, where, where we at? I mean, can we? We just, we just done? Is this just dead in the water?
Well.
I'm, that's why we're here, cause I've done, I, I can't, I can't give, I can't issue a permit for that. Because, that, for that rule.
Yeah.
You, I mean, the.
I mean, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, I, I wouldn't, you know.
No, and I told him, yeah, I have a right to come talk to commissioners about that, cause I can't issue, I mean. I gotta do my job or I'll get fired.
Yeah, 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 and that's understandable, I just.
We got two houses across the street from it, they're fixing to have to tear theirs down. Cause they're, they're way worse than that, they're bad house, they need to come down. I mean, and this guy obviously will do a good job, I know he does good work, but.
Yeah.
I, I can't.
According, uh, yeah, unfortunately, I mean, our hands are tied, I mean, and I, I'm, I would just say the city manager would advise. Not, you know, going against the law, now, uh, Eileen has stated there is a process that you can petition FEMA. Um, but, uh, knowing federal government, unfortunately, like I do, it's probably gonna be. Really expensive, you wanna kinda talk about?
Yeah, I don't know of the process, I just know that some property in Breckenridge was replotted to designated a drainage easement. To get FEMA to change the designation on that property, but that took an engineer, it took studies, it took a lot. Um, and so I just know of that happening, I wasn't, I didn't guide them on the process or anything. But that could be potentially something that. He could look into, um, but I just don't, I, it's, it's gonna be take an engineer at the very least.
Who would be looking at paying that cost?
The property owner.
Probably, okay.
Already pretty special.
You want time for them?
Yes. At least allow me, you know, what you, you know, the other gentleman. Just allow me that and give me some time to see if there's any way around this, and if not, in nine days, you know, let's run it back.
That's fair, okay.
So you wanna allow him time, nine?
Yeah, you're looking to ninety days to.
Thirty days, whatever, just anything.
To make the repairs or to come back with?
After you contact a FEMA, as soon as possible.
Or look into the law to see if our, our laws can supersede their law, because that's what I understood when I read the meaning of it.
Unfortunately, city law don't, don't, um. It could get worse with the latest legislative action that's going down in the state, but, um, so ninety days, I mean, what you allow the other one. And I would say with FEMA, you probably wanna do ninety versus thirty, because it's. Might take a little while, but.
Well. Cynthia, do you think they should do ninety days and just bring it back to the meeting in September? To hear an update from the property owner, whether the order, anything happened?
Hey, we'll do another.
I'm here, hey, Rob.
And unfortunately, that was quite a bid in this town, people end up getting property, not even realize they're in a flood zone, they don't. They don't know it, so then they find out. Tell the true lie.
Well, I mean, my deal is that you just have someone that's willing to invest.
Exactly.
Their resources. Uh, out of their pocket into the community to fix up. Uh. A property. You know, for someone to live or, or family or, you know, whatever the, the case may be, it's just the fact that you've got someone that's willing to do that. And. You know, our hands are tied. You know. It's frustrating. But then people die in some of these houses, you've had to try to go get some bucket when they're under water. That's. Oh, dude, nineteen eighty-one, I was here, I, I was here, I was in fifth grade. And I watched the boat. Go right across town, I mean, I'm, I'm with you.
I'm with you.
I understand, I'm, I pick up what you're putting down, but at the same time. I mean. I mean, I'm looking at it from the standpoint of as a commissioner, you know, what can we do to better our community, but I understand the flip. Or, uh, that's a, that's a natural call or that disaster that could happen that we don't have any control over.
Let's, let's give him ninety days, let him come back, see where we're at.
As, as vast, I would see if you could talk to the county about your value, because like you said, that rockwork is worth more than two thousand. So, and you're gonna be the only person to come in there and say.
We have one of y'all make, make a motion on that, please, so ninety days?
Well, I.
Just tabling that?
I think basically you're just gonna table it.
All right, okay.
Do we need a motion for that?
You need a motion to table.
I move to table discussion on one ten West Third for ninety days.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, thank you. One oh nine West Seven.
I'm, I move to accept voluntary conveyance of property located at one oh nine West Seventh from the property owner and authorize the city manager to execute a release and conveyance agreement. But.
Move in a second, all in favor. Uh, thank you, thirteen oh three West First, we have two options.
I do second to that.
So. Obviously, it's, it's mobile home, there are the buyer. Um, in, in that, um, he's asking for. You have more time, um. So. You know, if we gave him ninety, I mean, what staff recommendations to give him ninety days? Um, you know, to bring it up and then if not, then the board of demolition.
So if he doesn't do anything in ninety days, do we have to do this again?
What, wouldn't come back if you were the demolition, it wouldn't come back, they get ninety days, if he doesn't do it, then the. The order of demolition is.
Okay.
I move to declare the building located at thirteen oh three West First. Dangerous building in order that the building be repaired within ninety days. The building is not repaired within ninety days, order that the building shall be demolished. Second.
Motion second, all in favor. All right. We're down to item ten. Discussion and any necessary action regarding all a mobile food unit to conduct business on city property. Now turn it over to our city manager, please.
So we were, we've received a request from a gentleman, um, he would like to set up his food truck basically in the city soccer field. Um, during the upcoming twenty twenty-three soccer season, and those games take place on Saturday. Um, and our ordinance requires that, uh, if, you know, somebody's gonna sell on city property, they have to get commissioner approval. Um, so there, there's that issue, that's why we're bringing it to you. Um, I think the other thing, it just brings up, and you know, once we get this. Some of our ordinances rewritten, um, you know, it will be better, but on this. A lot of cities, um, and this is something for you to consider. Maybe directing staff to bring back some options on, um. How that can take place more seamlessly and without having to. Um, come to the commissioner and, and pick and choose, there can be criteria that staff can implement that criteria, I know there's interest. Um, on, you know, from the downtown, um, development council. Um, as well about, you know, food trucks and, you know, putting them on the, on a side street. Um, and having, um, well, like we had the. Uh, what was it, the? Christmas, uh, thing, um, they had to kind of be off the beaten path a little bit. On, and it was back on private property, but if you can have them, you know, front and center. Um, you know, you might get more synergy in what's going on in downtown. Uh, but in order to kind of treat everything the same, whether it's a city street or a city park. Or the city soccer fields, um, you might wanna consider if you're interested in allowing that, if you're not, then. Don't do anything to look at it, but if you are interested in allowing that. Um, we can go back and look at some other cities and how they handle it and what that criteria is. And then it's just, you know, somebody just goes through the process and as long as they meet the criteria, they would get that permanent to do that. But you still do have this one here. And that's what the ordinance says.
I move to approve Mr. Strassman's request to set up a mobile food unit and have a business on the soccer field on Saturday during the twenty twenty-three soccer season.
There. Motion second, all in favor. Uh, all opposed, aye. Motion does pass.
Do you want staff to look at? Change, uh, updating that, um, part of the ordinance so that it.
I will, yeah.
Okay, and bring those back to you for consideration, yeah.
Cause you're gonna have events at the trade barn.
Right.
That they're gonna have. Over there.
Yeah. People do that.
Out of eleven. Discussion and any necessary action regarding adoption of final strategic plan, including vision, mission, core values, goals and objectives.
All right. Uh, okay, so you all know what all we've been doing on, um, strategic planning, um, you know, through. Joint effort of everybody in the community, really, um, along with yourselves, we have our vision statement, we have a mission statement, we have core values. And we have, um, five broad goals. And so what staff did was we went back and we evaluated all the surveys and just all the information, you know, that we. Basically, we were there when y'all were talking as well. Um, and so we came up with these objectives under each of the goals. Um, and I don't, I mean, I can read through those, do you wanna? Yeah. So, goal number one is invest in infrastructure, and so these are objectives under that where we would accomplish that. So for example, development. Um, and implementation of a street plan, which is actually already ongoing. As you all know, um, maintain and improve water wastewater system. Uh, and those are some of the things that are, we're doing right now, uh, as well. Um, objective three, continue to invest and diversify the park recreation. So replace and update playground equipment for the feasibility of splash pad. Identify low-cost activity items using existing resources and some of those things. I've had somebody contact me that would like to start, like we're doing the soccer league, they like to start a pickleball league and apparently they're. Big time, like in NIMWOWs and Weatherford and, um, there's a really low-cost way we could do that, um, you know, in, in the trade barn. Um, the sand volleyball court, apparently that issue has come up in the past. Um, and I think that that would, there's a low-cost way that we could, um, get a sand volleyball court in the park. Um, and then dog park would be another, you know, kind of low-cost way to diversify our parks. Um, and maybe that would help, you know, if people had places to take their dogs. Um, and run them, um, you know, in a contained area, maybe that would help the dogs running wild, I don't know, but. Um, a lot of cities do have dog parks and it's a fence of our own city property, we have a lot of city parks. So, those are some under that, and then goal, uh, two is invest in employees. And these are the objectives we came up with. Um, continue to increase employee pay to match current market pay, develop phased-in approach for certification pay. Um, you all a couple of years ago, I believe, a year, a year and a half, um. Approved the certification pay schedule, but we, we haven't ever funded it yet. Um, so, you know, try to get a phased-in approach to do that. Um, develop professional development plans for different employees and required training, basically invest. Help them do what they do better. Um, yeah, develop a positive organizational culture with employee involvement. And update and maintain city facilities promoting safe work environments. And then, uh. Goal three is invest in beautifying Breckenridge. Uh, and you can see those increased code enforcement, um, addressing associated housing, the high grass and weeds. Enforcement of blowing grass, clipping the street, for example, and that's not only beautifying Breckenridge, but. Um, it's also taking care of our streets, is what happens is people. Unfortunately, we do have alligator cracks and potholes and stuff, and when people blow their grass clippings in the street. It, you know, there's dirt there, it just starts growing grass in the street, and so it starts, um, deteriorating the road. Um, so we're looking at, you know, strategies to try to help that. Um. And junk vehicles, evaluate partnering and re-establishing unified Breckenridge. Um, I know there's been a couple of different iterations. Um, and so explore those options, um, street department. Again, address the grass growing in the streets, force partnerships with the county, Texas Ag Extension, Master Gardener Program. Um, there's been a lot of conversation about how we can, you know, work together to make Breckenridge more beautiful instead of, so. Those are the things there, um, and if you guys have other ones that I'm not mentioning, I mean, please feel free to chime in. Um, goal four was promote economic development tourism and Breckenridge is a destination. So one of the things we pose is evaluating the efficacy of a main street program. So one of the things we propose is evaluating the efficacy of a main street program, we used to have one. Uh, and maybe, um, we don't, we coordinate with the BDDC, we'll be seeing on that. Um, something to look at, um, improve and market Lake Daniels as a destination, um, I mean, that's a great resource that we have. And, um, I mean, it is primitive camping, you can look at investing more in that, um, or. And or, um, we can look at just marketing it, so people are aware of, you know, of the option to camp out at Lake Dan. Um, so really looking at how we can maximize that resource that we have, and it is a great resource. Um. Selected city events, we're meeting the chamber, and we can see in other community groups, and these are some ideas. Uh, Chalk Park, if you've never been to one, they're pretty cool, um, events that bring people from out of town, and really with the fact that we're the mural capital of Texas. Um, it would kind of play in nicely to that, we could have a contest. Um, and maybe, uh, you know, look for more areas that we could do, the winner could do a mural on a, on a building or something. Um. Food Truck Friday, a lot of communities, that's kind of really big, and a lot of communities do that, we do have this. You know, parking lot here, I mean, uh, up on, uh, Main Street somewhere on Toffler Walker. Uh, Movies in the Park, Shop Local, and we've talked about that, um, and I know David's been talking about that, but. Really try to have a coordinated, uh, market, something like that. Um, goal five, promote transparency and communication, so, uh, development of a comprehensive communication plan, and some of the, you know, we're doing a lot of these things under here. Um, but really be strategic about how we do it, so really, um, that's where that communication plan comes in. Um, updated and efficient records management, um, and we're continuing to work in that area. Uh, and objective three, inform and involve residents and community members. You know, there's a lot of different ways, some cities will have a high school representative on the city council or the city commissioners. Uh, and they learn more about what's going on.
Basically, what blank is.
Yeah, I guess some grades, just not many.
Surveys, I mean, we did one, um, that would be our base, and you know, definitely after a year, we'd like to kind of do the same thing, and see how, you know, we improve, and I do see improvement's coming. Uh, we've got, uh, we're looking at a newsletter that we would put on our website and, um, social media, and, um. We can e-distribute it, email, uh, e-distribution, uh, use of digital communication tools, city employee, uh, involvement in various community. And civic organizations, so, you know, I mean, I know I'm involved, and I know there's some others that are involved, states are involved, um, but really, um. Promoting, you know, some of our importance, getting involved in, um, community organizations and being part of the community. So. That's what staff came up with. What do y'all think?
I'm going to approve adoption of final strategic plan, including vision, mission, core values, and all the objectives.
Second. Motion second, all in favor? None opposed, thank you. Out of twelve. Discussion and any necessary action regarding Resolution twenty-three dash fourteen. Directing publication of notice of intent to issue combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation. Of the City of Breckenridge and resolving other matters related to the subject, so, since we'll get it back to you.
Okay, well, you guys have the background information, um, we've been talking about this for a while, I mean, you guys started talking about it last budget season. Uh, we talked about it at last meeting, and so this is the first step, if you look, you've got a calendar in there, but this would be the first step. You, uh, we published the note, notice of intent to issue COs. Um, and what you wanna do is, you wanna do your best case scenario, so you put a ceiling on it. And that ceiling is nine point one million. Um, and what they did, and that went up from that original last meeting, we talked about seven point five, we hadn't gotten our, the preliminary values from the appraisal district. So based on the preliminary value and a very, um, you know, robust, uh, lower. Interest rate in August, when you would actually sell the bonds, um, that's what that maxed. It's more than likely, I mean, that interest rate's not gonna go down that much, um, and, you know, but we wouldn't. This is not saying you're gonna issue nine point one million, I just wanna make that clear, this is just, you can't issue any more than that. Um, in the, um, July, uh, August meeting, you guys would determine, once we have those final certified values in hand. And we know what the interest rate is doing, then you would determine what that amount will be. And again, that's gonna be mainly for streets, so let's say, I mean, I'm thinking probably seven, maybe eight million, so. The, if it's seven million, six, uh, what we would recommend, six million would be for the streets. And a million would be for the parks and the facilities. And that would allow us to look at replacing the playground equipment on the park that, I guess, is like thirty years old.
Thirty-two.
Um, and, um, and then look at, um, we've gotta do something with the. Uh, top and bottom shop out at Public Works, it looks like. They're a little country out there, and so I think the most inexpensive way that we could do it would be, and I have it, I'm I'm happy to take you guys out there. If you ever like to go out there, I know the mayor's been out there, oh. Yeah, um, but I.
With that tire swing at the far, at the. That's sentimental, right? I mean.
Anyway, so that.
Break some horse when they go.
So that's what this is is about, this is just the first step, and we, we have to publish it twice, and, um, and then, um, we'll bring it back. And, uh, you know.
I move to approve Resolution forty twenty-three dash fourteen, directing publication of notice of intention to issue combination tax and revenue certificates. Of obligation of the City of Breckenridge and resolving other matters related to the subject. Second.
Motion second, all in favor? I, none opposed. Out of thirteen, discussion and necessary action regarding ordinance number twenty-three dash oh nine. And ordinance of the City of Breckenridge, Texas, amending appendix A fee schedule, sewer service charges of the Breckenridge Code of Ordinance. To increase the base monthly rate, providing repealer, interoperability clauses, and providing an effective date, this is the second reading.
I'm going to approve second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero nine, ordinance of the City of Breckenridge, Texas, amending appendix A. Fee schedule, sewer service charges of the Breckenridge Code ordinances to increase the base monthly rate, providing repealer and interoperability clauses, and providing an effective date.
Second. Motion second, all in favor? None opposed. Out of fourteen, discussion and unnecessary action regarding Resolution twenty-three dash thirteen, appointing a commissioner to serve as mayor pro temp.
So every year after the general election is held, um, at the first meeting. After that, you are required to select a mayor pro temp, um, and the previous year it has been Rob. And then, so you can, between y'all, you can discuss and decide who you would like to appoint as the mayor pro temp going forward. The mayor pro temp does act, in the event that the mayor cannot be present or cannot make decision, anything like that, they would step up at that.
I did it the year before, Rob, so it's like a parent's turn. I'm gonna do one.
Means you get put on everything.
No, I'm doing good right here.
Makes sense, he's willing.
I didn't say willing.
I move, uh.
Whoa, whoa, where's the discussion?
I move to approve Resolution twenty-one three dash thirteen, appoint Harry Mercer to serve as mayor pro temp. Second.
Wait, what's wrong with your ticket?
Motion second, all in favor of this? None opposed, all right. There you are, bud.
Congratulations, sir.
And boy. All right. Do we need a break for a minute, go right into it? Do you have a question?
Maybe we need to go back to the.
All right, we're going to the second session at six fifty P M. Thank all of y'all, we'll be back in here shortly, right now. All right, seven oh six P M, we're back in reverse session, no action was taken, and it's gonna be. We're adjourned.